Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. I'm Palo Alto Weekly Editor Jocelyn Dong and along with my colleague Janati Shaner, who's the City Hall Reporter, we're pleased to be moderating this debate of the council candidates for 2018. On a personal note, I'm really happy to be here at the Little Theater at Cumberley in South Palo Alto. I grew up here and I remember attending high school band concerts for my sister that took place right here on this stage. And like many of you, I'm sure, I've enjoyed the opportunities at Cumberley with many fine groups that are offering their services here. So, you know, Cumberley is a great resource for Palo Alto and it's one of the many things that makes our city so special. So, the cosponsors for tonight, speaking of special people, are the American Association of University Women, the senior services provider Avenidas, the Youth Well-Being Collaborative, Project Safety Net, and the Palo Alto Chamber of Commerce. Of course, we're all here to hear from these five Palo Alto residents who've decided to step forward to serve our community, to try to tackle some of Palo Alto's problems, and to make Palo Alto a better place. At this point, I'd like the candidates to introduce themselves in two or three sentences each, starting with Pat Boone.
Hi, I'm Pat Boone, and yes, that is my real name. I guess the best way to describe me is that I am a grassroots candidate and I'm a person who's here for the people.
My name is Allison Cormack. I've lived in Palo Alto for 21 years. I received the Tall Tree Outstanding Citizen Award in 2012 for my work on the libraries.
So, I'm Tom DuBois. I'm here tonight to ask for your vote. I moved to Midtown in 1995 and my kids went to El Carmelo, JLS, and Gunn. And it's been a pleasure to serve on the council for the last four years and I wanted to thank all of our hosts for hosting the event tonight.
Yeah, I want to echo that as well. Thank you guys very much for doing this. My name's Eric Filseth. I've been on the council for four years. Prior to this, I was a longtime manager in the semiconductor industry and I've lived in Palo Alto for 30-odd years or something like that, the last 27 in downtown north. And our two boys went through all the Palo Alto school systems and it's been a privilege to live here.
Corey Wolbach, thank you to our hosts and thank you everybody for coming out tonight. This is important stuff. I'm a Palo Alto native, grew up here, went to Palveri, Aloney, JLS, and Gunn. I've worked in the private sector and in government. I'm currently a consultant on the side along with city council. And I moved back to Palo Alto in my early 30s and stayed to help take care of aging parents. And I'm proud of what we've done in the last four years on city council, but there's a lot of work to do.
Thank you so much to all the candidates and for all of you for showing up today. I'm going to cover our format for this evening before we get this party started. So, we're going to have three parts, basically. The first one is going to be myself and Jocelyn asking a few questions for every candidate. And then in the second round, we're going to turn it over to the candidates themselves. They've submitted questions for one another, so we'll give them a chance to ask those. And in the final round, we'll turn to the questions from the public, including some that were submitted online to us in the days leading up to this debate. And if anybody in the present here would like to submit a question, we have volunteers from Project Safety Net with cards. We would encourage you to fill one out. And please indicate on the card which candidate you would like to answer the question, if it's targeted at a specific one. So, just raise your hand throughout the debate and a volunteer will come with a card. And so, just a reminder for the candidates, particularly for the last round, some of the questions from the audiences might come with an opinion or point of view you disagree with. You're very free to disagree with them, but we would ask you to respond to the substance of the concerns expressed. It's likely we will not get to ask all the questions, so you should please know that the candidates will be around if you want to ask them personally. And we'll be holding events, there will be other organizations holding events throughout the campaign season leading up to the November 6th election, so.
Okay, a few final housekeeping details. The bathrooms are not in this building, they're outside, so you need to exit, turn to the left, and then go up here to the A and B wing. Those are the ones that are open. In order to preserve a respectful atmosphere, we're asking audience members not to campaign for your candidate during the event. No hooting and hollering, no jeering, no sign waving, please. We'd like to give all the candidates the respect that they deserve and the time to share their views, regardless of whether or not we agree or disagree with those views. This event is not being livestreamed, but it is being videotaped and that video will be posted by the weekend on paloaltoonline.com and also our YouTube channel, which is youtube.com/paweekly. You can also see biographical videos that are already posted on YouTube. There you can learn about the candidates' lives and things that they've learned, who triple majored in college, who went to Washington DC without a job, who had an acting stint in the Kevin Kline political comedy, Dave. On a serious note, we hope tonight will be informative and helpful to you in deciding which three candidates to elect to city council. So, Janati, please ask the first question.
Well, we're going to start with the easy one, housing, the housing crisis. It's a topic that's consumed the city council throughout the year. It's a top priority and there's a goal of creating 300 units per year that the council does not look like it's going to meet. I would like to ask each candidate, which one program do you most strongly support to address Palo Alto's shortage of housing? And why don't we start with Corey Wolbach and go to the left.
And this will be a 45-second.
Yeah, and this will be 45-second responses.
And you said, "What is the one policy we support?"
Yeah, "What is the one program do you most strongly support to address Palo Alto's shortage of housing?"
Using coordinated area plans, where we involve the community in the planning process for key areas that are expected to be redeveloped. I would rather we get ahead of the developers rather than waiting for them to come to us. Key areas that are of interest are the Frye site or North Ventura Coordinated Area Plan that we've already started work on, potentially when CPI goes away in the Stanford Research Park, and around the University Avenue train station, which could also be coupled with redesigning the grade separation in the station area.
Great, thank you. Eric Filseth?
You know, I think we ought to, I think the city's greatest focus ought to be on the programs that focus on affordable and below-market housing, both for sort of moderate and low-wage earners and also potentially for city employees such as Palo Alto School District staff, city staff, and so forth. And so, I like programs, for example, Joe Semidian Teacher Housing Project, I think we ought to get behind that. I think we ought to get behind the Wilton Court Project, assuming that it can be made to work out with the neighbors, which I think it will. And I also think we ought to raise impact fees and use it to fund affordable housing.
Great, thank you. Tom DuBois, please.
Kind of a similar answer to Eric. I think the biggest problem with below-market rate housing is funding it. And the council, let's go out, the council had actually passed a impact fee of $60 and on second reading that got cut in half. And so, over the last year, we've raised about $1.5 million for affordable housing, where we could be raising $3 million or more. And, you know, by leveraging that money through loans, we could buy land to actually create housing. And we see the county raising those rates with Stanford right now.
Great, thank you. Allison Cormack?
Affordable housing is definitely the one that's at the top of my list, and particularly for seniors. Our population is aging. If you look at the results of the National Citizens Information Survey, it's 6% of the people are happy with how we're doing affordable housing. So, that's at the top of my list.
Hey, to be too much of an echo, so I'll try not to be as much as I possibly can. I think affordable housing is certainly one of the areas that we need to look at. We're getting a reverb there. But I think it needs to be real affordable housing. I think affordable housing needs to be for people who are in an affordable housing situation, those who are making under $100,000. Many people say affordable housing, but it's for people who make $150,000 or $200,000. So, I think we need to create programs for the harder-working people here in Palo Alto who just can't afford any place to live. So, we have to just work together a little bit better with the developers and the city council and come up with a master plan that makes sense, instead of just creating housing that people just can't afford at all.
I can ask a quick follow-up question for Allison Cormack and Pat Boone. Is there a particular program? I mean, I understand that affordable housing is important, but is there any particular program that you think the council should pursue to promote affordable housing?
I think we might be sitting in a place that'd be appropriate to consider. Whether or not the school district considers workforce housing here, that's certainly on the plan and things that could be considered. If you look at what's going on with Moldau at the JCC and you think about, you know, the environment, the village that's created there, I think this is another candidate.
Okay.
I think for me, I disagree. I don't think Cumberley should be a place for housing. I think it needs to be a place for activities, which is doing a great job, and I think we can move together to make this a much better place. But as for affordable housing, to answer your question, I believe that we need to work with the developers that are given these contracts to create more housing here in Palo Alto and have units that are dedicated to real affordable housing. Maybe a stronger percentage of those units, maybe some that are in play right now that are on the table. I think maybe we can work together with them to create a better outlook and then we're not just creating housing that people can't afford at all.
Okay, thank you.
Follow-up for Eric Filseth. You mentioned a couple of projects that are moving forward, the Wilton Court, et cetera. Do you think there are any additional types of zoning that are needed in order to encourage housing in Palo Alto?
You know, I think for market rate housing, I want to wait and see how things evolve with the housing plan. I got to tell you, I'm tremendously encouraged by the VTA lot project, where, you know, after the property owner finally gave up the ghost that they would be able to turn it into office buildings, they came up with a market rate housing project. And I think I'm tremendously encouraged by that. The challenge with affordable housing is how do you finance it? Because somebody's got to pay for it. And I think that's really where the focus needs to be for that.
Great, thank you. We're going to turn our attention next to a transportation topic. The city's in the process of narrowing options for rail redesign at four crossings to make way for more frequent train service. Do you support closing any of the crossings to car traffic? If so, how would you deal with traffic circulation? And if not, how would you deal with the threat to private properties? We're going to start one over with Eric Filseth at this time.
Other than I'm recused on this topic, I think it's almost inconceivable that we would close the south crossings, Charleston and Meadow, right? Most of the discussion revolves around Churchill. And I think that option should not be ruled out at this point. There's closings and closing. You could close it, for example, as rush hour. Does it necessarily need to be closed at 1:00 in the morning? I'm not sure about that. So, I'm waiting and seeing on that one. But my sense is that really the biggest problem is in South Palo Alto, and that's where most of the effort's going to go. And then what we do with Churchill and the Alma Street crossings in North Palo Alto are, you know, not easy, but easier, if that makes any sense.
So, at this point, I think we need an accurate, comprehensive circulation study to really understand, if we do close some of these crossings, where is that traffic going to go? And I think we need a systematic approach. Instead of, we can't really look at each crossing in isolation. We need to understand a set of alternatives. And part of that could include improving our existing separations to be able to handle traffic, to be able to get from Alma to Oregon easier, Oregon, Alma to Embarcadero easier. So, one thing I really advocated for was a dedicated citizens group from the beginning. This is a really complex, long-term project. We just formed a citizen group this year, so I'm pleased to see that, but I think we really need to bring the community along with us.
I'm sorry, this is a 45-second question.
So, at the rail committee meeting last week, it was made clear that actually partial closings are not going to be an option. There'll be a closure or it'll be open, but partial closings are not technically going to be feasible, apparently. The specific question was about closing, so Palo Alto Avenue, the one in the far north, which hasn't been mentioned yet, also was mentioned at the rail meeting. And the issues with El Palo Alto may require closure there as well. So, I certainly second council member Tom DuBois's statement, and the staff is already working on this with a consultant. They're doing traffic studies that are including how you have to get, how you have to get from, you know, different parts of the city. I live in South Palo Alto. What I would like to see is all neighborhoods treated fairly. So, some of the discussion at council about what was going to be closed and where properties were not going to be taken, I don't feel was extended to all four crossings, and that's important to me.
I think this issue is not something that we're probably going to have an answer for tonight to journalist questions. It takes a little bit more time, a little bit more studying, to actually come up with the right answer for this. This is going to have to have a lot more thought and a lot more studying into this. And I think, I believe what Tom and Eric feel is that this is going to be something in which we have to have the neighbors involved. This is not going to be just a council decision and we say that's the way it is. I think it has to be a full point where we're all involved in this, because we cannot have something closed and then you deal with all the traffic behind it and that becomes a whole bigger issue for us all, and no one wants that headache when we already are dealing with so much traffic issues on the road right now. So, I believe we need much more resident involvement.
Just to correct something, I think that for the council, protecting neighborhood quality of life, improving mobility, and limiting any potential takings of homes is important in every neighborhood. So, I just want to set the record straight on that. As chair of the rail committee this year, I don't think it's my job to impose my vision. I think it's my job to help facilitate, to bring more people along for the conversation. We are looking at a, I'd say at this point, very plausible or maybe even likely closure for Churchill. A redesign at Embarcadero might be necessary in order to handle the traffic, but we could also include a bike and pedestrian underpass potentially at Churchill, similar to what's at Homer, to make sure that kids getting to Paly, for instance, can get there. But there's a lot more details we're going to have to figure out. And just again, want to emphasize, we're not trying to take anybody's homes. And in South Palo Alto, we are working hard to get the permissions necessary from Caltrain to do a trench.
Okay. Just one quick follow-up, and this is a total yes or no follow-up. At the beginning of the year, the city council had a goal of reaching a decision on grade separations by the end of the year. I pretty much heard every candidate just say that they need more study, more analysis to do anything about any crossing. So, my yes or no question is, is that deadline pretty much abandoned? And on a related note, are you worried that the city's going to lose Measure B money if it takes the time to study, to do the kind of studies that you think are necessary? So, is, like, are you concerned about the deadline that the council set earlier in the year?
We're definitely not going to make a decision by the end of this year, and I think that that's important. It is important that we hold the line and work collaboratively with Mountain View and Sunnyvale to make sure San Jose doesn't tap into the funds that were supposed to be for North County.
Okay.
Well, you know, I'm a keg is half-full kind of guy on this. Sorry. Yeah, I, you know, it doesn't look like we're going to make the deadline either. And yes, I think we should be quite worried about losing Measure B money on this. I mean, theoretically, it's not supposed to happen, but, you know, there's a lot of precedent in this county for money earmarked from one thing ending up someplace else.
Yeah, I'd say no, we're not going to make the deadline. You know, last year, we had a lot of rail committee meetings. I think we agreed then to meet twice a month. That really hasn't happened this year. I don't think we should lose the money. There was an agreement between the mayors, Mountain View, Sunnyvale, Palo Alto. And I've heard in the news, Sunnyvale's trying to squirm out of that. I think we need to hold them to it. It shouldn't be a race. We really need to separate all the grade separations.
I think the question was, should it be abandoned? Yes, the deadline should be abandoned. It's clear that we're not going to have enough information and time. And there's, I haven't seen any evidence that we won't be able to get the money that, you know, it's been agreed that we would receive.
I agree. I don't believe that's going to be met at all. And as for our rail committee, I think that we maybe need to develop it even more to give them a much more freedom to come up with better options for us. I think our rail committee, in some ways, they may not feel that they have all the traction they need to give us all the ideas that they should have. So, I think they should be given a little bit more, I wouldn't say authority, but at least a little bit more perk to get back to us and come up with much better development for us.
Follow-up question for Tom DuBois and Allison Cormack. You both referenced having the need for traffic studies. Are there any circumstances under which you would be in favor of widening Embarcadero Road?
So, again, when you say widening Embarcadero, I think what we haven't seen is a really systematic study that looks at a set of alternatives. What we got was, if we close this intersection, that traffic is going to go somewhere else, which is kind of obvious. So, I'm not sure we necessarily need to widen Embarcadero, but again, I think the difficulty in getting from Alma to El Camino, in terms of the interchanges, could be improved. And I think that's what we need to look at. There's actually a lot of space, kind of Embarcadero and Alma, potentially.
My understanding is that there were a few suggestions from the transportation official who's left, excuse me, that involved a different routing that might mean that, you know, you'd have an easier flow and you would get better traffic flow even without widening it. I think we are too early in the process to decide. I understand that that bridge may have to be rebuilt at some point also. So, and everyone knows that that intersection, as you get through to town and country, it's really possible that that could be redesigned in a more thoughtful way. Someone gave me a suggestion recently about like an overpass for the kids. Just, I was like, okay, well, we'll take all suggestions. Thank you.
Let's move on to another topic that's not controversial whatsoever, and that's commercial growth. In the last couple of years, the city council has done a lot to limit the pace of commercial growth. It has modified the annual 50,000-square-foot limit in downtown Cal Avenue and El Camino. It eliminated downtown cap a year and a half ago from the comp plan. It also agreed to slash the cap in the comprehensive plan for long-term development in keeping with the citizens initiative. So, my question for the candidates is, when it comes to regulating office growth, what more would you want to do, or what would you undo? And we'll start with Tom and go to the left, go to his right.
Well, I disagreed and I voted against removing the downtown cap. That was an abrupt motion made by council member Wolbach. We narrowly lost that vote. And so, I think the question's really, you know, what's a bigger need, housing or office? So, I would undo that vote. I think a downtown cap creates space for housing. And like we saw at the VTA lot, when it's clear that we're not going to allow more office space than housing projects do come forward. So, I think that's my number-one thing that I would undo.
Great, and you'd like to mention that answers here are 45 seconds. I'm thinking, thanks to all the candidates for keeping within the time limit. Go ahead.
I'm comfortable with where we've landed. Each of us might have a different personal preference, but I'm comfortable with where we've landed. And I'm really hopeful that this particular topic will be less of a discussion going forward and we can focus on the impacts, the housing and the traffic, and things that would actually make our life better.
I agree with Tom that I support the cap that's in place, but I think what needs to happen on changing it or moving forward when it comes to regulating businesses is that we need to regulate businesses. We need to come up with code enforcement for them, and we also need to watch out for density, where a lot of companies are packing people in. Okay, they're not that tall anymore, but there's still more people in the building now than ever before. So, we need to make sure we have better regulation on what's going on inside these buildings.
So, I think we actually are in a pretty good place. Our downtown office cap, I did vote to remove because of the limited amount of office development that we now allow. I think that near train stations and near retail is the best place to put it, rather than, say, along Middlefield or San Antonio. So, I actually stand by that decision. I also stand by the decision to slash our expected office development between now and 2030 in half from what we had originally planned a year ago. That gets us closer to balance with the housing numbers we've targeted in our comprehensive plan. And also on the VTA parking ride lot, I'm really proud of what we did there, happy to have led the charge against the office-heavy mixed-use plan that was going in there. And I'm glad that different developers said, "We heard what the council said they wanted", which was moderate-density housing, and they're bringing it forward.
Quick follow-up for Allison Cormack, since you just mentioned that you hope this will not be as big a conversation. Sorry to disappoint you for at least the next minute, but this implies to me that you pretty much agree with everything the council did in every vote on the office cap. So, if you were in the council when, for example, they were removing the downtown cap, which we just heard about, which way would you have voted on that?
Did Eric answer?
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry. Maybe if you can answer that and then we hear from Eric Filseth.
Sorry, I actually wasn't paying enough attention because I was worried about being fair. Sorry.
Okay, I'll ask you again after we hear from Eric Filseth. Sorry.
Well, so, I agree with Tom, I agree with Tom that the council erred in removing the downtown office cap from the comp plan. I also think the council erred in weakening the 50,000-square-foot limit, annual limit. I think I supported Lydia Koo's motion to reduce that from 50,000 square feet to 40,000 square feet, which also failed 5-4. And I think we should have retained, it was too soon to remove the design scoring contest. I think it was too soon. I don't think we should have allowed the provision to allow developers to roll over. I also think that we were too hasty in reducing impact fees on office development, particularly for affordable housing, and I think we should put those back up again.
Okay, so, my question was, how would you have voted on the downtown cap?
Well, as we discussed in the video endorsement interview, it's possible that there are things that I don't understand that were going on behind the scenes, but I didn't see any reason to remove the cap.
Thank you.
Make a quick comment. I mean, there were unintended consequences. Removing that cap allowed residential space to be converted to commercial, which is what we see with speculators buying the President Hotel.
And we will give you guys a chance to interact a little more in round two. So, let's hold that thought.
All right, we'll go to council process next, 45 seconds. Significant decisions have been proposed and moved on late at night by this council, including removing comp plan programs, changing the scope of the rent stabilization discussion, revising ADU regulations beyond what was initially recommended. These sudden decisions prevent public input and staff analysis. Do you believe this to be a breakdown in process? Why or why not? What can be done about it? We'll start with Allison.
I think it's a significant problem. I think it's a significant problem because it's not clear to me when the council members are making these decisions that they have sufficient data. In addition, the members of the public aren't present. So, I've seen it happen multiple times over the past year. And I think the remedy, should I be elected, is to vote no.
I think that council, their meetings go way too late, period, and it needs to stop. I believe that any individual cannot be coherent after a long period of time, especially on a council day, as to give you the best quality information that's going to be betterment for your lives and those who are watching this. So, what I would suggest is that we need to have multiple council meetings, maybe in a week, maybe two, that can square off this a lot quicker and a lot easier so we're making more coherent statements. Going back to what may have been done in the past, I think maybe we need to revisit those policies. I think that's one thing the new council needs to do, is look back at this year and see what we did and what advice we may be able to do differently as we move forward.
Obviously, nobody likes to stay up really late, but if that's what it takes to do the people's work, that's what we need to do. If we want to start our meetings earlier, maybe we need to have that conversation as well. As far as the concern about the order in which we do our operations, we hear a staff report, then we hear from the public, and then we deliberate make decisions after hearing from the public. I think that that's important. In each of the examples you cited, we also came back to the matter and, having heard from the community, made additional changes. So, I actually think that our process does work, but it's clearly far from perfect.
Yeah, so, I don't see it as much of a breakdown of process as really a breakdown of discipline. And if you look at the first two years we were on council, we didn't do a lot of that. And it was really in the second two years that most of sort of the, you know, the impulsiveness, if I can use that word, happened. So, I think it's a question of individual people need to exercise more judgment and responsibility, and hopefully we can learn.
So, I think hopefully one thing the audience is looking for tonight is to really understand each of our values and vision for the city. Yeah, I think it's bad governance. I really, again, believe in a, not only transparency and giving staff an opportunity to analyze an issue, as well as the public to know that it's going to be discussed, but also that we're making fact-based decisions. And when kind of very large motions are made late at night with kind of new ideas sprung on people, it's just bad governance. It's impulsive, it's rash, and it's really not something that I value. And I liked Allison's idea of just voting no when that happens.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Now, we're ready for round two, which are the questions that the candidates submitted to ask one another. And so, the way this is going to go, we're going to pose the question and then each candidate will get a chance to answer it. And the candidate whose question this is will answer last and he'll have a chance, or she will have a chance, to ask one follow-up from anyone else, which will be about a 30-second answer. So, we're going to start with Pat Boone. We're going to go alphabetically here. And his question is, "Do you favor or oppose a significant business tax on the scale charged by San Francisco that would be used for local transportation, including the cost of constructing railway grade separations? What form would that take? Headcount, gross receipts, payroll tax? And what about exemptions?" So, we're going to start from Corey Wolbach. We're going to end with Pat Boone, and then he can follow up.
Yeah, we contemplated this, but I didn't think we'd studied the other options enough in 2016. in 2016. I was very disappointed that the Finance Committee did not bring us this option for this year. I am very interested in starting a conversation early for a potential 2020 ballot measure that would be an employee headcount tax for primarily transportation programs, not necessarily for grade separations. It depends on what level we set it at and whether it would work. But the investments needed for grade separations, we're talking about orders of magnitude more than transportation programs. So I would, my starting point would be focus on program solutions. And we could also use it as a carrot stick by saying, either you pay the tax or you pay the same amount of money directly to our transportation management associations, but either way, you as especially a large employer should be helping the city deal with the impact of your commuters coming to town.
Thank you. Eric Filseth.
So let me start very broadly on that. I believe that one of the fundamental characteristics of the region at large, the Silicon Valley, is it tends to produce very large amounts of wealth, which are piled up in certain sectors, and doesn't cover its housing and transportation costs adequately. And those costs end up socialized to the community instead. And we try, both through, you know, things like Measure A and Measure B, which raise sales taxes and bridge tolls and so forth, but also in terms of, you know, all the external areas we know, middle and low-income workers being driven out of the region, you know, projects that, you know, propose to use neighborhood streets as parking lots in order to make them pencil out and so forth. Right? So I think fundamentally, the economic engine of the valley needs to be retuned if we're going to scale a little bit. And so that means that the parts that generate the wealth, primarily tech, healthcare and real estate, need to take a larger role in covering the housing and transportation costs. So in that spirit, yes, I think we should do, I think it's premature to define exactly what kind of tax, but I think we're going to need it.
Yeah, I supported a stakeholder group to look at a business tax, which again was voted down, and I'm really pleased to hear that Councilmember Wolbeck's reconsidered. I do think there's opportunity to do a headcount tax for large companies and do it in collaboration with potentially Cupertino and Mountain View so that it's not just one city doing it. And, you know, things have really changed. You know, back in the day, companies had this concept of stakeholders, which involved not just shareholders but employees and the community. And I think that's really gone away. To a large degree, it's really about mostly shareholders at this point. And so I think cities really do have to look at things like a business tax as a way to have businesses pay their fair share. The other things that have changed are things like Prop 13 and businesses paying property tax as well as taxes on services instead of goods.
This issue is really about matching sources and uses of funds, and this seems like an appropriate match in my mind. Whether or not it is a headcount tax, a revenue tax, or a square foot tax, that is information that I'm not ready to make a decision on. Whether or not there should be an exemption for small business, it's appropriate to consider. I don't know if that'd be 25 or 50 employees. We'd have to sort that all out. I want to echo what Councilmember Wolbeck said about transportation programs. So in addition to the train crossings and grade separation, it's important to me that we have something potentially about shuttle buses that's going to make a difference for residents.
I think absolutely, since this was my question, I think absolutely a business tax is needed and I think that should be mandatory. But I believe that we need to look at it on a company-by-company basis. Maybe that can be under some consideration. Maybe it doesn't have to be a one-size-fits-all. Ask where that money can go to in support, obviously, so many transportation issues that we need to tackle here in the area. But when we come to just our grade crossings, when we just talk about our Caltrain funding, we need to also look at this as a regional aspect. This is not just Palo Alto Caltrain. This is throughout the entire region. So when we start making those decisions, we have to think beyond our own borders, which I'm certain many of us do. And the other parts of that money can be used for a lot of the TDMs, forcing these companies to come up with their own ideas to work with the city to create a way to get their employees in and out of the city. So I think it needs to be a combo of a little bit of money and also coming up with better organization coordination.
Thank you. And Pat Boone, would you like to ask any of the candidates a follow-up question from any of their answers? You don't have to, but you're allowed to.
I think, you got me on the spot here. That's good. I think for, we can talk about, we can talk about the business tax a little bit more. I'm just kind of curious from everyone.
We're hoping to limit the follow-up questions to one candidate just so we can keep things moving. So if you have a specific question for a specific candidate, we would urge you to...
Okay. Mine is for Corey. Now, you've wavered a little bit on this business tax. I mean, are you now for this?
Thirty seconds, please.
So I appreciate that and also I heard Tom's comments. So I actually have been meeting with colleagues in other cities for a couple of years off and on about this, trying to figure out the best way to move this forward in different cities. I've been trying to articulate my vision for a while now. I think I've been pretty consistent in saying that this is something we should explore, but when you put a tax on the ballot, you have to show that you've done your homework. Right? You have to show in order to get it passed. You know, we want to get something passed, not just talk about it and win political points. That's why I opposed rushing to the ballot in 2016. But like I said before, I was interested then in moving it forward through an appropriate process. It should have happened this year. Finance Committee didn't bring it to us.
All right. Thank you. We're going to move to Allison Cormack's question next. What is an example of a time you changed your mind about a policy or project and why did you do that? We'll start with Pat Boone.
What was the question again?
What is an example of a time when you changed your mind about a policy or a project and why did you do that?
You're talking about during this campaign?
No, I believe it could be in your work as well.
I think the only time I changed my mind, and this can happen to anybody, anybody on this dais or anybody in this audience or anyone, I think it happens when you start listening to people even more, when you do more homework and you learn more about a subject. And that's where it comes up with any topic or any question that's asked to any of us today, is what we feel about it right now. But it's not necessarily indicating this is exactly how we're going to feel later on when we learn more. So I think what's changed my mind is when you do, when you study more, when you learn more, when you engage more with people, and you start to get a more valued opinion of it that's not so direct, you can waver a little bit, and I think people will actually applaud that of you, to admit when you're wrong, you learned something new, that now makes sense, and you know what? If you agree with me, let's go with this direction.
Thank you. Corey Wolbeck.
Yeah, I always say it's important to be really consistent on your values, clear about your vision, but that policies are just tools in the toolbox and you should use the right tool for the job. And if you realize the tool you're using is the wrong one, put the hammer away and get out the screwdriver. One good example was how we formatted our comprehensive plan. I had initially said that we should take the programs in our comprehensive plan, put them in an appendix, so the comprehensive plan itself would be a more streamlined document. Not in response to Councilmember DeBois's op-ed calling people names in your paper, but in response to talking to members of the community, talking to staff, talking to members of our Citizens Committee that had helped us craft our comprehensive plan, I realized that leaving them embedded made for a better, more usable document. The goal was a usable, effective comprehensive plan, and when I heard that response and I was convinced by the arguments, that leaving the comprehensive plan programs embedded was the right approach.
Thank you. Eric Filseth.
Sure. The first time the colleagues' memo on rent control came to council, Councilmember DeBois and company, I voted against it and the second time I voted for it. And the reason is I applaud the objective. I think it's the right objective. I think we need to be very, very wary of the unintended consequences of rent controls, which are well-documented and widespread. And the first time, that guided my vote. But by the time it came to the second time, I believe the problem has worsened. I believe doing nothing is not without risk. And as wary as such a discussion must be, I have come to think that we should have it. That's why.
Yeah, I think I've learned a lot and evolved a lot over the four years and, but as Councilmember Wolbeck said, I think my values have been constant and consistent. I think for me, the project that I changed on was the VTA lot at the corner of Pageville and El Camino. You know, I was pretty skeptical about putting a very large project there. And, but, you know, I listened, we asked questions, and the idea of basically a pilot project for smaller units, which we need in this city, studios, one-bedrooms, near transit with strict transportation demand management plans passes, you know, I voted for it as a pilot project and something we're going to measure and make sure it works. Just super quick, I don't think I've ever called anybody names. I try to focus on policies. I did call out some rash actions in editorial, but I think it needed to be done.
I think you called us wolves in sheep's clothing.
My question. My example is actually a policy one. When I gave birth to my children, I worked at Hewlett Packard. There was no really such thing as paternity leave, and even at a progressive place like HP. And I remember when it was first instituted, other places, and certainly there was a lot of it when I worked at Google. And initially I was like, I don't know that this is, you know, we did fine, sort of the way that doctors are always like, we did fine. I'm sure the residents can do fine. And I have completely changed my mind. And I've changed my mind not just because of the impact on children, but also because of the impact on partners, whether it's male or female, who are not the parent who gives birth, and fundamentally because I think it makes it better for women in the workplace if everyone is expected to participate in caring for children. So that's my example. And then my follow-up question, if I may. Mr. Boone, I don't believe you gave an example. Could you give us an example of a time you've changed your mind on something?
I have to think about that. I don't normally change my mind on a regular basis. It's not part of my DNA. It's not part of my process. I can't really think of a clear example. I mean, I will tell you this, that I, I'll give you one little example. During this campaign is that I felt that, you know, we need to make sure that we get our business community, we regulate them well, and we get them to be part of the process. And I think throughout this campaign, I've kind of changed my rhetoric just slightly a little bit, that we don't need to beat up on them, but we need to have them as partners in solving the traffic issues versus just hating on them all the time.
Thank you. Next question comes from Tom DeBois. Recently, a planning commissioner failed to disclose that he had a carport he wanted to convert in a garage, while a new ordinance that applied to that exact situation was being discussed by the commission. The state and the city have rules about disclosing material interests, rules that prohibit personal enrichment to avoid the appearance of impropriety. The question is, what do you think is the proper response from council when a council-appointed board or commission member acts unethically? So we're going to start with Allison Cormack.
This sounds like an appropriate thing for the city attorney to assist with, review all the rules, figure out what needs to be done. As I recall, both the mayor and Councilmember Holman wrote about the need for the council and everyone to review the rules, so sort of a two-part answer. One, let's figure out what should be done. And then second, for the instant, and then second, what can we learn from this to make sure that everyone has a better understanding of what is appropriate and what isn't.
I think anybody who represents the government in any inappropriate matter needs to immediately be put on hold and not be continuing their position. I think until we figure out exactly what exactly we're talking about, I mean, if you give me a clear example, then I can give you a better answer. But I believe that's something that has to be processed rather quickly. You can't keep someone in place if there is an issue that's ongoing. You can't fix an issue when you leave the individual or individuals in place. I think they need to be pulled aside and the process needs to go on, and then we can figure out a way to resolve this.
Corey Wolbeck?
Well, I want to differentiate between two levels of ethical misconduct. One is where there's a legal issue. In that case, of course, as Allison pointed out, the city attorney should be involved and appropriate action should be taken immediately. The other case is where it doesn't rise to a legal matter, but still reflects badly on the city and diminishes public trust in city operations and city functions. That also is something we need to look at very carefully. I don't think this is the appropriate format to say exactly what we should do about a particular situation that we all are very aware of and was cited, but I do think something does need to be done, up to potential resignation.
Well, obviously, ethics and good judgment are absolutely fundamental to what you need on people in council, and that applies to commissions too. You know, that individual had been on PTC for a couple of years by the time that he came up for renewal, and every single one of us on council knew exactly what we were getting when he came up for renewal. Five council members voted to reappoint him anyway. I was not one of those, and I think that's all I'll say.
So every year Palo Alto does what's called the National Citizen Survey, which is our most statistically rigorous study we do. And for years, even when trust in national government was declining, trust in local government was pretty high. But even now, we see kind of trust in local government declining. So for me, this was kind of an easy question. I think we need to maintain basically the highest standards of ethics. It's not a legal bar, it's an ethical bar. And, you know, once you lose public trust, it's just really hard to earn it back. So I'll ask a follow-up, I guess, to Eric. How do you think about kind of degree of ethics? We had an ARB commissioner who resigned over something in tens of dollars compared to millions of dollars.
Well, I think, you know, I think that individual was right to step down. And, you know, as you said, you know, when you have ethical issues, it undermines confidence in government, in all of us. And I think, you know, we need to make sure that doesn't happen, and I don't think it's a question of training so much. I think you've got to pick the right individuals.
Thank you. The next question is from Eric Filseth, and I warn you, it has quite a preamble here. So, all right, this relates to affordable housing impact fees on commercial expansion. New office and R&amp;D expansion produces new demand for housing, including new affordable housing, so the city levies an impact fee in order to generate new affordable housing funds. In 2016, the then-city council set its affordable housing impact fee at $60 per square foot of new office and R&amp;D space. In 2017, the current council voted 5-4 to reduce this fee to $35 per square foot of new office R&amp;D space. In 2018, the County of Santa Clara has voted to levy an affordable housing impact fee of $68 per square foot, applied to Stanford. So $60, $35, $68. What's the actual right value of this fee for Palo Alto? Tom DeBois.
So I think I answered this question when you asked about housing early on. Because again, I think the role of the city really should be for below-market-rate housing because nobody else really makes it happen, and we can really make it happen. I supported the higher impact fee. It was supported by a consultant's study about what was sustainable. We need the money. If we're going to build housing, if we're going to buy land, we need the higher rate. County commissioners have seen that with Stanford. It's really something I think we should reconsider. And again, the second thing I'd like to see us do is, along with that, put a target for how much BMR housing inventory we should have in the city, because I think setting a goal will help us stay focused on it.
As a challenger, I don't have the benefit of having reviewed everything that they have, so with some trepidation, it seems reasonable that we should return it to the $60 square foot. I would, you know, like to be able to review all of that before I make that decision. I'm also aware of the fact that there are other jurisdictions who, when they've raised this fee, have seen a dramatic decrease in development, which may in fact be the intent, but then that means that there is less of that money that comes in. So without more information, I can't choose the exact right number, but certainly it's reasonable for it to be higher. I think 68 for Stanford is, I'm not sure if that's the benchmark we should be using. This is, you know, we're a different environment than Stanford.
Higher impact fees, absolutely. I believe that that's going to be very, very important for us to move forward because we need as much money in our revenue fund as we can possibly get. The big thing is going to be coming up with a way to spend that money. It's coming up with a much more intelligent way to spend that money. So I think we need to put more focus on that, get the vote out and get it approved that we can get these impact fees up to where they need to be, and then the major discussion can be, how do we spend this money more effectively?
For every complex problem, there is an answer which is simple, obvious, and wrong. I think that this question actually is part of a pattern of misrepresenting really complex things. When we increased our affordable housing fee to $35 a square foot, that was a dramatic increase and set us ahead of, I think, every city in the county, maybe even the region. It was a big increase from what we previously had in place. It was a big increase from what we previously had in place. It wasn't as high as $60 a square foot. We worked together on this, a couple of us on the finance committee. We initially said, let's set it at 60. So this is another example of changing your mind once you learn more information. The city doesn't build affordable housing. Nonprofits build affordable housing. And nonprofits came to us and said, are you crazy? Setting it at $60 a square foot is going to, as Allison pointed out, stop all development. That means we won't get any inclusionary housing, means we won't get any affordable housing impact fees in commercial development, and you won't have anything to spend.
So the Nexus study that the city did in 2016 to look at this, and the one quoted by the county supervisors in the discussion of Stanford, indicated that each new square foot of office and R and D space created demand for $264 of affordable housing. So $35 per square foot covers about 13% of that demand, and the other 87% is outsourced to the community. Because if the new office project doesn't pay that cost, then somebody else has to, and that means the community, either in cash, as things like Measure E do, or in the externalities. So when somebody says, you know, essentially what we're talking about is the community subsidizing office expansion. From that context, I don't think it's unreasonable that the creators of the office space should cover more of the associated housing costs, and even the county's $68 is only a quarter of the demand it generates. So for me, I think $68 ought to be a starting point, and we ought to capture, consider even more than that.
You have a chance to ask anybody a follow-up if you'd like.
Yeah. So Councilmember DeBois, I think I heard you say that you would support a similar level to Stanford, $68. Is that correct?
Are we having a council meeting? Yeah, I mean, what the exact number is, I think...
Sorry, I want to finish my question then.
Oh. Thought that was your question.
This issue is scheduled to return to council and the finance committee later this year. My question is, may I count on your support for that?
We have council members in the audience, but I can't see. It's very bright up here. I think, again, this Nexus study, it was done by affordable housing experts. It's supported to higher level. So yeah, I think I would support $68. I, too, talked to affordable housing.
Thank you.
I talked to some affordable housing experts in San Jose. They were eager to see us move forward. Palo Alto often leads on these things, and I think by us doing that, other cities would have followed. You know, and Stanford, in their gut process, was claiming it should be $20 or $30 because that's what the city is at.
Great, thank you. And next question is from Corey Walbach. Palo Alto is a growing community with a growing percentage of our residents over the age of 65. What does the city need to do to prepare for this silver wave? And we're going to start with Eric Filseth.
This will be a one-minute answer.
Yes.
Great question. You know, I think transportation is going to be a key one. I think innovations in mobility and potentially larger expansion of shuttle systems are something that would benefit the community. I actually think that expanding city amenities such as park space and related things, and there's pieces of, there's parts of the Parks and Rec Master Plan that are designed with the intent of seniors, and I think we should implement those as well. I think, one of the things that I think we do, and it's going to be particularly challenging, we haven't talked about finance yet tonight, but I think we do need to make investments in the community, and a certain number of those are focused on, or need to be focused on seniors as represented with the growing share of the population.
Didn't expect a question on a silver wave. I mean, there is hair color to take care of that. I think one of the big opportunities is the place we're in here at Coverly. Really like to see some shared uses, you know, the school district do its thing. We definitely need the playing fields, but we need more senior services as well. And particularly, I think in South Palo Alto, we could use some more, but we need them in general throughout the city. So I'd really like to see a lot of the senior programs that already exist at Coverly continue. I'd like to see the city perhaps even look at a senior or elder commission to look at more senior services. And then the third thing is, I really want to make sure La Camita has a long-term home. They're at Stevenson House right now. They're looking at downtown locations. You know, nutritious meals, low-cost meals are really important, and I want to see that program continue.
So this came home to me because I live on Ross Road, and we put in a bicycle boulevard, and it helped me crystallize my thinking about what is the transportation we need within the city for people as we age. And I'm just going to expand the question from seniors because frankly, there are people who have disabilities of all ages, whether it's temporary or permanent. So transportation, I'm delighted to hear Vice Mayor Filseth pick up on my idea of expanding the shuttles. It's been a long time since anyone on council has actually paid much attention to this, and I think it's really going to be what's going to change, the ability for people to get around within the city. In terms of senior affordable housing, I still continue to regret that that wasn't constructed at Maybell. The demand for it is going to continue to increase, and it's actually quite hard to find senior housing at this point, whether market rate or whether it's affordable. So I'm delighted with this question, and I think frankly, it's a big task for us as we look at the changing demographics of this community. It's only going to be a bigger opportunity and challenge.
I believe senior services are vital. I think a lot of things that Tom said, thanks for taking my playbook out of that one, Tom. That was some of my points in that, but still, I believe that we need to have more services for seniors. That is mandatory. I believe that housing needs to be one of the aspects that we look at. We need to get really serious about that. We talk about affordable housing for a lot of younger people, a lot of middle-aged people, but we need to also talk about housing period for seniors, and maybe that should be the first housing we talk about. Maybe we should move the senior services up to not only being an, oh, yeah, we need to cover that thing on the city council, let's make that a priority, maybe the first thing on the agenda versus the last thing on the agenda.
Some great ideas. All right. Whoever gets elected, I hope we run with all of those ideas. I think they're all great. I think it comes into a few areas. One is accessibility, another is mobility, another is services, another is housing, another is just a chance for social gathering and engagement. I think having multiple generations together here at Coverly in the future would be a great opportunity to have people who are a little bit older, work with people who are younger, show young people that, you know, you've got a bright future ahead of you, and also help them stay young at heart. I'm glad to hear Allison's picked up on my idea of revamping our city shuttle system. I've been talking about it off and on for about four years. Our last planning director wasn't very enthusiastic about it, and we just lost our planning, our transportation chief. So I look forward to moving that forward with whoever gets elected. That's important for students getting to school and for seniors.
Do you have a follow-up question for one of the fellow candidates?
Yeah, a question for Councilmember DeBois. You talk, or have talked in just the last couple of years, as we've seen more surveys showing a strong inclination in the community to support affordable housing. You've talked more about yourself desiring more affordable housing. In 2013, you led the charge against affordable senior housing. How do you square that circle?
I guess you're talking about Maybell. I think that was mostly a right project, but it had a lot of warts on it, and I think it was in the wrong place, and ultimately, the voters spoke on that. It was six years ago. I think we should quit fighting Maybell and get together and work on some solutions going forward. You know, being on council is really a team sport, and it's really need to work together to make some of this low-market-rate housing happen. And I think we need to do it in the right place, maybe not in the middle of an R1 neighborhood, but we can make it happen and definitely support senior housing.
I'm going to ask one follow-up question for Corey. This is actually from our cosponsor for this night, Avenidas. Many seniors have requested a specific senior-only shuttle for El Camino Real and for areas to shuttle seniors to and from Stanford medical providers, PAMF, Avenidas. Would you support this, and how would you implement a seniors-only shuttle?
Well, that's a great question. I think it's important that we take, and this is kind of my vision has been, we have a lot of shuttles that run around Palo Alto. We have some private ones. We have some run by nonprofits. We have some run by Stanford. We have our city shuttle. Our TMA, our Transportation Management Association, is growing. It's growing from just downtown to expanding to Calفرing Avenue, and I'm pushing for our TMA to partner with Stanford Research Parks TMA, the Mountain View one and the Sunnyvale ones, to create a subregional TMA. I think that if you have enough scale in a program, such as a shuttle program, you can then have more specialized individual routes. Absent that big vision, which I am pushing for, I'm happy to work with Avenidas and city staff and other nonprofit providers to make sure we have a senior shuttle. And if we're able to keep Avenidas here and downtown, when they reopen downtown, we need to keep them connected. Shell might help.
Okay, thank you. We are going to move on to reader and audience questions now. We've received many through email this past week, and we have a wonderful array of questions here, so we're going to dive right in. I think the first thing we're going to do is ask a hotel tax question, and we're going to ask not all five of you, because we're going to try to move through various questions. We're going to ask two of you the hotel tax question. Yes, this will be 20-second answers, and this is for Pat and Allison. This is from our cosponsor, the Chamber of Commerce. There's a potential impact on hotels, which have seen a recent decline in occupancy, and our retail restaurant businesses. If visitors are discouraged from staying in Palo Alto hotels, that'll cascade into an impact on sales tax and the general fund. What is your stance on Measure E?
You want it first, or?
Okay, well, I agree that we need to have a hotel tax, but the thing about the hotel tax, we can't look at that solving all our problems. I think that's just one portion of us paying our bills, but it can't be what we see as the all of in-all that solves everything for us. I don't believe it's going to be the great solution that we need.
So do you support Measure E?
Yeah.
As discussed last week, I'm a reluctant endorser of Measure E, a reluctant supporter of Measure E, primarily because of the demands we have in our infrastructure plan, which is targeted for. Not a big fan of it going up that high, but it is something that we need in the city to meet the commitments we've already made to the voters.
Thank you. Our next reader question is about accessory dwelling units, and this will be for Tom DeBois, Eric Filseth, and Corey Walbach. And the question is, with accessory dwelling units being encouraged by the city, how do you propose that the parking impacts be monitored and evaluated? What is your proposal for proactively anticipating and planning for neighbor complaints about increased parking and traffic problems relating to ADUs? And why don't we start with Tom DeBois?
Well, we did some, I think, positive things on ADUs on Monday night, but one thing we didn't really get into was the parking requirements. So I'm pretty pleased with the progress we've made on ADUs. I remain concerned about parking, and again, I think it's potentially something we should revisit. So specifically, you asked about monitoring and enforcement. I mean, right now, there is no parking requirement for ADU, so there's really nothing to enforce. So I think we need to listen to the community, and we need to be ready to change that.
Well, I pretty much agree with that. I think by any measure, the ADU ordinance that we passed a year and a half ago has, you know, is executing on its target, which is a dramatic growth in ADU production. And I agree with Tom that the council erred when it removed all parking requirements and all ADU citywide, and I don't see any way to monitor and enforce that.
I'm happy to have led the charge and introduced the memo that got us started on reforming and legalizing our ADU rules. That was before the state told us we had to do it anyway. I'm glad that it's been recognized as an effective and popular program. The state also took away our power to require any parking in anywhere near transit. So the only pockets of Palo Alto where we could require parking for an ADU are the parts of Palo Alto where we don't have a parking problem, these small little areas far from any transit. And trying to enforce it in the areas where it's not an issue is why we removed it. It just seemed unnecessary.
All right, a question for Allison Cormack. City-school relationship. Given the community need for city council to collaborate with the school board on issues such as Coverly, rail grade separations, population growth projections, what specific steps would you take to improve the working relationship between these two elected bodies?
So I've been spending a lot of time in the city-school liaison meeting for the past year and a half, pretty much every single one, and fundamentally, I don't think this is something that the elected officials can solve. I think it has to happen at the staff level. Watching the communication back and forth, it's a monthly meeting. It's really staff that has the level... Sorry, how many seconds do I have for this?
I'm sorry, 20 seconds.
These are 20-second answers.
Sorry, give me a 45-second version. So absolutely has to be at the staff level, and I think there needs to be a designated liaison, and I'm out of time.
Thank you. Next question is for Eric Filseth, and it's relating to youth well-being. Elected board members will start their term in 2019, a decade since the Palo Alto community came together to collectively prevent youth suicide and promote youth well-being. If elected, how would you use your role, or what policies would you champion to foster youth well-being in Palo Alto?
I'll tell you the thing that, boy, I don't even want to say this in this audience. The fact that we're going to move from track guards to cameras scares me quite a bit, and so I think we need to monitor that one very, very carefully. So I think that's actually level zero on YCS for me, right, or Youth Community Services right now. Beyond that, I think the fundamental issue is how do we fund these things, and I think that's going to be the challenge.
Question for Tom DeBois. Airplane noise. Do you believe Palo Alto has done all it can to push the FAA and representative, Anna Shu, to address the residents' concerns over airplane noise? What more can be done?
So first of all, one of the great things about Palo Alto is our informed citizens, and we have some amazing people. We've got a white paper on airplane noise that probably could have got a PhD. So I think we've elevated the issue. I think it has a lot of attention to staff. It's just very difficult for a local city to deal with an FAA issue. So I think we're on top of it. We're putting in an accelerated legal process, and that's really kind of our next step.
This question is for Pat Boone. What measures, if any, do you support to address the growing number of RVs being parked in neighborhoods and occupied on a semi-permanent basis?
Well, I think this has been an ongoing issue that, oh, boy, 20 seconds. One of the stories that I covered many times when I was at NBC, this ongoing problem here in Palo Alto. And I believe that we need to come up with more measures to get them off the street. I mean, and it's not just to just get them out of here because they're an eyesore. It's just that they need to be somewhere else that's going to be a little bit easier for them and a lot safer for them. So I think we need to come up with a better resolution to where they need to go, but they need to go.
All right, this question is for Corey Walbach. The city's unfunded pension and retiree healthcare liability has been estimated at $1 billion by someone on that panel. What steps should the city take immediately to ensure it handles its obligation?
So actually, I want to give credit where credit's due. The finance committee, with Eric Filseth in particular, has done a really good job of taking important steps. So I think we're already on the right track in addressing this major problem. We're certainly not the only city in the state with this issue. We're in one of the worst spots, but we've set up a 115 trust. We're calculating things, which is more reasonable. We're pushing for, you know, getting ready for Calpers to amend their expectations to be a little bit more reasonable, and we're working with our bargaining groups to make sure we can maybe give them a little bit more money in their salaries, but save money in the long term so we don't dig ourselves deeper into the hole.
Thank you for covering pensions in 20 seconds. This next question is from the audience right here, and it's for Eric Filseth and Tom DeBois. It seems there are just two sides, residentialist and pro-growth, and it seems whoever holds the majority exerts their will. This feels like, quote-unquote, division politics, like we see on a national level. How would you plan to address that tension? And let's start with Eric Filseth. He looks ready, Ben.
How much time do I have on this?
These are all 20 seconds.
All 20 seconds. I actually don't think the community is that divided on this, and I think, you know, the first couple of years of the council, we attenuated commercial growth, which I think was a large part of the problem, and I think most people sort of, you know, internalized that as a reasonable thing to do. There's still some discussion going on on housing, but I actually think most of the community would like to see some more housing. At the same time, I think most of the community kind of like this sort of low-rise, moderate-density suburban nature we have, and while there's inherently some room for tension between those things, I think it's our job as council to figure out how to navigate that, and I think it can be done.
Thank you. Tom DeBois?
Yeah, I think on many other issues, the council is aligned or has different alignments. We're predominantly talking about land use. We're predominantly talking about land use. And again, I do think it's how you manage when you're in the majority. I think the first two years, we worked pretty hard to try to get beyond a 5-4 vote on a lot of issues. I don't think we really pushed things through. That kind of changed a little bit in the last two years. And so, again, I think one of the goals for the council should really be to try to get beyond just a 5-4 vote on issues.
All right, we're going to ask about Prop 10 next. It's both a reader-suggested and audience-suggested question. Do you support or oppose, I'm sorry, this is Allison and Pat Boone. Do you support or oppose State Proposition 10, which would give cities more authority and flexibility to enact local rent stabilization policies? If it passes, do you support or oppose the city of Palo Alto studying, if not enacting, a range of possible local stabilization policies? Or is this off the table for you? Allison Cormack.
I oppose Prop 10, and recently, the staff withdrew their recommendation to the city that we be for it. The discussion, actually, the city itself, the council decided to go with neutral position. Fundamentally, for me, it's about supply of housing. Do I support studying things, of course, but rent stabilization is rent control, as the city attorney has indicated.
I'm not a huge fan of rent control, but I am a huge fan of rental protections, which means a rapid amount of just-cause evictions and tenants who are being treated unfairly being pushed out of their apartments so their owners can come up with higher-end apartments. So I am for that measure, but with an asterisk. I think that we cannot have rent control because it would probably mess up a lot of things.
Thank you. And we have another question from the audience, and this will be for Cory Walbach. What do you think of the multimillion-dollar traffic project in South Palo Alto, the roundabouts, extended planters on Ross Road to encourage bike riders to share the road with cars?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we all voted for it. We all voted for bike safety for kids. But what we got was something that left us scratching our heads and left something wanting. The important thing in our postmortem of what went wrong, I think we've learned a couple of big lessons. One, our communication on that project, and it applies to others, stinks. Secondly, we, staff, early on, precluded important options for how to engineer and how to do a bike boulevard on Ross Road. They took them off the table early on, and that means we couldn't have, never had the right discussion in the first place.
Next question is for Eric Philseth. Height limit in commercial zones, are you willing to raise the height limit if it adds housing and with what requirements?
So I would really like not to have to do that. I think there's a lot of room left within existing heights and zoning to expand that. Would I never, ever do it for any reason? I'm not sure I would rule it out if somebody brought a teacher housing project that was 55 feet tall and so forth. But in general, I think most of these problems you can solve with money instead. I wouldn't raise it for commercial housing. For affordable housing, again, I'd rather, I'd go to money first. If that failed, I wouldn't necessarily rule it out.
Next question from the audience is for Allison Cormack. Palo Alto is rich in parks and nature preserves. How important is the conservation and protection of nature, and how will you promote these values on council and provide funding?
Another 20 seconds?
Afraid so.
Well, there's 36 parks, so it's going to be hard to fit in in 20 seconds. This is incredibly important. It's a huge part of what makes Palo Alto special. In fact, those of us who live in South Palo Alto use the parks more than people who live in North Palo Alto. In terms of funding, it's not in the budget. It's not in the infrastructure plan. So if we're going to do something serious, we're going to have to look at whether or not that's a bond.
I have a question directed to Cory Walbach, and you can take issue with his premise if you'd like. You plan to build 10,000 new homes in Palo Alto? That would mean more people and more students. Where do you think the room will come from for new housing?
We decided to pursue 30, about 3,500 to 4,500 new housing units between now and 2030 in our comprehensive plan. I argued for studying, I think, at one point I suggested we at least talk about 8,000. Then I said, let's talk about 6,000. In the end, we decided on a compromise, and that's what we're working on. So in as far as where it should go, Friesite, Stanford Research Park, downtown, maybe some more around Caliphine Avenue, and if Stanford's open to it, at the shopping center.
Thank you. For Pat Boone. Frail mentally ill homeless seniors living on the streets, park benches, parking lots. Neither the Opportunity Center nor Hotel de Zink can adequately care for them. How do you plan to help this frail population and/or provide meaningful and comprehensive care to homeless frail elders?
Well, I think it's not an easy answer. I think that we're going to have to look at some type of place. I'm not suggesting a shelter, but I'm suggesting that we need to look at a facility or several locations that can be there for their mental health and also to answer some of their housing issues as well. I believe there's going to have to be a more complex approach to this. This is not an answer that can be delivered right here in 20 seconds. But I think it needs that we have to look at mental health and then look at housing issues for them.
All right, we have one final question before closing statements, and this question is for everyone. Are you concerned about the escalating costs of running a campaign for city council in Palo Alto? Do you believe the council should set limits on campaign spending? Let's start with Cory Walbach.
Yeah, I ran a pretty frugal campaign in 2014, which was by the standards before that kind of average, I got way outspent, including by at least one person who's up here with me, which is okay. And so now we're all trying to keep up with the craziness we saw in 2016, which was even worse. I think there's a lot we need to do. I was actually working on a colleague's memo to change this, working with our city attorney, had drafted it, had co-authors, my co-authors backed out. I hope that after this election, we can reintroduce that topic and actually get it done. We need campaign finance reform in Palo Alto. Public funding is a good way to look.
Eric, go ahead. This is for all candidates.
Ah, okay. You know, I don't think it's a good thing, all right? I think, you know, the first $100,000 campaign was in 2014, and then there were three or four of them in 2016, and it looks like it's going that way again. I don't know if this is something that can be unspooled, or it just comes with the urbanizing nature of, you know, Palo Alto and the region and so forth. I'm not sure it can be done in practice, right? I'm sorry to see us go this direction, but so be it. By the way, who outspent you in 2014?
I think both of you did. Lydia, AC, and Scharf. I only raised, spent about 25,000.
We were both 25 or 30.
Tom DuBois, please.
Yeah, I think it's a huge issue. I really think money in politics is corrosive. And last time, I raised about 22,000, I think, maybe 25.
Sorry for the mistake.
Yeah, and statistically, I came in second with somebody who spent $100,000. You know, they were talking about campaign limits. 2016 didn't happen. I would support those. I think, you know, you look at Mountain View, much bigger city, I think they spent like 15,000 or 20,000 so far. So, you know, I really think we're talking about very expensive land, a lot of big money in Palo Alto. We need to try to limit the campaign money.
Thank you.
I think the current council bears full responsibility for not implementing campaign finance reform. And I see no reason why we should have people giving $5,000 and $6,000 to candidates. I think it's inappropriate.
Well, I'm a little bit different than everybody on this dais. Just checked my campaign funding, and so far, we've collected $610 in my campaign, much more than anybody else on this dais. Some of my contributors are $10, and I'm very proud to have them. I'm very, very proud to have them. And I think, you know what? It's not about campaign funds to any candidate, not just on this dais, but every candidate. It's about connecting with the people. You stop thinking about the money and donations, and you connect with the people and say, hey, how you doing? Let me tell you about me, and make that your focus, not the dollar.
Well, thanks, everybody, for answering the 20-second questions. And thank you, the audience, for great questions to ask. We're going to end with a closing question, and we're going to start at the other end from Pat Boone. This is going to be 30 seconds. What differentiates you from the other candidates, and why should the voters elect you to the city council?
Well, I have a grassroots campaign. I'm just a regular person who wants to make a difference, to change all of our lives in government. I have no purpose of, want to get here for my own self-gratification. Palo Alto adopted me after being a broadcaster throughout the country, and then I settled in here, and the city brought me in. So to bring me to city council would be to bring a person who has found new love for the city and to appreciate and give it back. So I think it's good to have a different outside perspective, something different that you'd have than anybody else on this dais, and someone that has heart in this race and not going on the notion that I'm going to get in office due to my political contributions. I have no strings attached.
There are three things that I talk about that are important to me in my personal life and my professional life, and in what I hope will be my political life, and that's being positive, professional, and practical. Many people run because they're against something, and that is not why I'm running. I believe the behavior on council, and particularly in the last year or two, has been unprofessional, and I'd like to be part of seeing that change. And I'm a practical person. I'm fiscally conservative. We need to pay for things.
So campaigning and serving on council can be very different. And I think it's critical that voters can rely on a candidate. I think with me, what you see is what you get. I've been very consistent, what I said on campaign trials, what I did on council, and I don't change in an election year. So my values, again, I value transparency. I prioritize residents, I'm very clear about who I work for. I'm not a residentialist, just in election years. And I really value fact-based decision-making. So I'm an engineer by training, and I really like to see us bring data to our hard problems.
You know, I've learned a lot, and I think I'll be more effective because of that in a second term. I got, I feel like I got a lot done in the first term, and I pretty much did what I said I was going to do when I ran the first time. I have been able to work with all of the council, which has been, you know, an education for me, but I think a good education, and it's been a privilege to serve, and I would like the opportunity to do it again. I should say that I'm not interested in a political career, all right? I'm not interested in being supervisor or assembly after that. I mean, I'm going to do this for Palo Alto, and when it's done, I'm going to go home. Thanks.
In 2014, I ran on slowing down office development, providing needed spaces through accessory dwelling units, and doing more community-involved planning, like through coordinated area plans, as we're now doing with Fries. I think I've governed consistently on that. I also said we should have more housing, especially studios and wide bedrooms before offices. I've actually not just talked about these things, I've introduced the legislation, I've introduced the memos to get us started on all of these, on ADUs, on revamping our zoning code to put housing before offices. And I think it's important that we have people in office who are actually going to get the work done and not just talk about it.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to, can we give them a round of applause for being here? I wanted to wish them the best in the remaining part of the campaign. Of course, they're going to be here afterwards to talk with you if your question was not answered. If you want to review any of the answers they gave tonight, our video will be posted on paloaltoonline.com by the weekend. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve and for your willingness to put up with all these questions tonight. Appreciate it. Have a good night.
Thank you.